Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Rutland Office of the Select Board. Regular meeting, today is Monday, December 2nd. It is 5:33. We are in the Rutland Free Public Library in the lower level. I hope everybody is safe and warm on this snowy evening. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Could I get a motion to sign Treasury Warrant 12 and payroll? Make a motion to sign Treasury Warrant 12 and payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And could I get a motion to go into executive session for reason number two?
Make a motion to go into executive session for reason number two. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Treasure Collector.
Second.
To return to open session immediately afterwards.
To return to open session immediately afterwards.
Thank you. Roll call.
City, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Deby, thank you. All right, thank you. We are back. For anyone who's following along, the next thing on our list at 5:45, which we have about two minutes, is the FY 2020 Tax Classification Hearing. Welcome to our guests. I'm just going to read the public hearing notice. Board of Selectmen, in accordance with Chapter 59, Section 2A of the MGL, Chapter 40, Section 56 of the MGL, will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 2nd, 2019, at 5:45 PM at the Rutland Public Library. This hearing is being held on the issue of determining a residential tax factor, thereby determining the percentages of the tax burden to be borne by each class of properties for the fiscal year 2020. Taxpayers and others are invited to present oral or written information on their views at that time. All persons interested are encouraged to attend the meeting. Hereby open the public hearing. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yet the floor is yours.
Well, the weather certainly isn't, so... But glad to be here.
Thanks, Harold.
And a pleasure. It's been a couple of years since I've visited with you. Diane, my colleague Diane, had been here in the last couple of years. And I'm joined tonight by a new colleague of ours, Heather Cheney. Heather's a assigned assessor to the wonderful town of Rutland. And so she's here mostly as an observer, though in a couple of years, I anticipate she'll be here conducting this hearing. As you know, this is a perfunctory exercise for a small town like Rutland that has historically levied a single tax rate across all classes of property. We come to you tonight with a hope. The Board of Assessors typically has encouraged that the town continue with a single tax rate. And if I might, I'll take just a minute to review this document that I prepared for you. We come to you tonight at the end of a process, what we call our assessment calendar. And throughout the year, our activities take us down a path of walking through an abatement season early in the year. We have, of course, town meeting. Town meeting adopts a budget. And a great share of that budget is funded through the property tax. During the summer months, we're busy inspecting homes, picking up any new taxable properties in this town that typically represent single-family homes. Though we do have some amount of other, what we call new growth revenue, that comes to us. The various sundry additions and garages and even some small commercial developments, solar projects as well. We also conduct an interim revaluation. And in that exercise, we look at the 12-month sales this year. Would have been calendar year 2018 sales. We compare our assessments with those sales that transpired to make some judgments then about where values need to land. It shouldn't come as a surprise that the market has been steadily improving over the last few years. We are introducing with fiscal year 2020 some modest increases in the assessed valuation. You'll actually see in this document that those increased values will have the effect of lowering our tax rate. Actually, I'll take you for a quick tour of page four in your handout. We are projecting that the tax rate will go from last year's $17.89 to $17.61 per thousand. The reason for the decrease is not that we're looking to collect less property tax. Of course, a budget that requires more funding is going to require a general lift in the property tax levy. But because of the increase in valuations, that has had the effect of lowering our estimated tax rate. Again, $17.89. Last year, projected to come in at $17.61. When that all plays out, and you'll see on the last page of the handout, we are projecting... And hopefully, I don't have an older copy. I made some last-minute revisions. The change in tax rate, in taxes, is actually $111, not $275. There was a correction that I caught earlier today. So the average residential property owner will see about $111 increase. That would represent about a 2.5% to 3% increase in taxes over last year. All told, we are looking to raise through the property tax levy $16,898,343. And that being just shy, I believe, of $1 million over last year's levy. With that, then, I will take any questions you have and answer them to the best of my ability.
Yeah. I have a question about your page three.
Mm-hmm.
My question is about the new growth revenue. And what has factored into that? Do you know specifically how many parcels were tabulated as part of that $363,000?
Well, let me refer to another document that I brought.
Oh, perfect.
And... That... The lion's share of that new growth revenue is made up of new single-family homes, of which we have 36 new homes this year over last year.
Okay. So... Great. I guess, do we do projections for... I mean, do we have a projection for next year, or do we not start that process yet? My only concern is that if we just limited new growth through the bylaw, if that number becomes lesser as the new growth revenue, that we're going to have to raise taxes in addition if that number stays steady. So if, let's say, next year we have less new growth revenue, we're then going to have to spread tax increases among fewer people.
You're assuming we're not going to have an increase in student population?
That has nothing to do with this document.
Well, taxes.
Well, so Harold, I think we're coming to a timeline, right? So this number is based on the revenue that we've seen from new growth previous. What you're factoring in is what the assessors will give us relative to projected new growth when we start doing the budget next month.
No, it's just a numbers game. I mean, this is 36 parcels. So if we have less than 36 parcels, this is going to have an impact on our taxes for next fiscal year, among the other residents outside of these parcels?
Well, no, not the tax rate, once we set it. And actually, Harold can probably explain it, but I don't know.
So new growth for next year, of course, is not something I have in my file to share with you at this point. We do know that there are some large developments coming into play. A bylaw would certainly phase in that growth. Will we be seeing another 36 homes come into the property tax levy mix? I can't believe that, based on what I'm seeing, that we would be far off of that figure. New growth also takes into account other factors, not only new single-family homes, but any additions, property improvements, some of our solar projects. We've captured some of that this year, anticipating capturing more of that next year.
But we've... So we've limited the single-family units that are going to be built moving forward in town. And that's the majority of this new growth number. I guess my question is, if this new growth number sees a decrease of 20% next year, how is that going to be affecting what existing payers are going to be paying?
It probably doesn't make a lot of difference, because this is new revenue. And we typically see tax increases in the realm of 2.5% to 3%, regardless of growth. So...
If I may add to that, too, just from my end of it. When we're doing the budget, we'll take the 2.5% increase to our property taxes that's spread out over the tax rate that the board has set on, and then the new growth is additional revenue onto that. So any changes in the new growth number would just mean a budget reduction rather than a tax increase, because we're limited by statute to only go up to 2.5%.
Okay, so it really wouldn't have any impact on the taxes. It would just have impact on the services.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what we've seen in previous years, when we've had, you know, a fairly limited number coming in, where the assessors would offer us numbers such as $180,000, we hope. And that was during the worst of the recession, certainly, where we just simply weren't seeing it. Yeah. May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Several years ago, and I don't remember which one anymore. I know Diane had come in and she sort of gave us a warning, and it did come to pass that we had one particular type of single-family home. It was the smaller, older ranches that were seeing a pretty marked, quote, "correction" in valuation. And of course, that was really significantly affecting the tax bills, the ultimate tax bills, of people who were least likely to be able to afford it. I'm noticing at the top of page five, it says a number of properties will realize corrective adjustments. One of them does say additions and renovations, which we know we're seeing a ton of. We're seeing a lot of in-law apartments being added, which is kind of an amazing thing. I wanted to just ask if we were going to see another cohort of that?
That phenomenon is still holding today. And we're seeing it across all the communities that we're working in. There is, as I explain it, this downsizing movement, baby boomers, people like myself, that are looking at the 3,000-square-foot home and wondering what in the world we're doing, heating such a monster and paying taxes on that large home. And creating demand for the smaller, typically, single-story home. And that does continue, that phenomenon.
Yeah, you see that on the market now, too. For the houses that are selling for most in town are going to be the ranches. So you have new, first-time home buyers and people that are looking to downsize competing over limited properties. And it's creating an issue with those properties.
So they're now being considered starter homes. I don't know that that was the case when Diane first brought this to us as a correction relative to valuation, that they were competitively, competitive homes on the market. More that, you know, just it was a question of what their valuation was. I don't know, but that was interesting, that you think...
Yeah. On the other end of the spectrum, we're finding that the very high-end homes are languishing. And Rutland doesn't have a strong market in the $750,000-plus category. But in communities that do, we're seeing that those homes are actually languishing on the market and sometimes taking several years to sell.
Wow.
And usually at a discount.
Now, next year's a revalue, right? Okay.
Very quick nod, uh-huh.
I just stopped and think for a second. Yes.
All right.
If I could just, to add at the end, I know Heather's been here for three months now? And it's been a delight to work with her as a new department head. The office is running smooth. Everything's going great. So I just want to say thanks at the meeting for all you're doing. It's really been great.
Great. That's always good to hear. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment during this tax classification hearing? Nope. 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 You're good. Unless you want to comment on our tax rate, you guys can hold on one second. They are. You're in luck. 28 cents. Yep. All right. Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, the rate's going down. What you're paying is actually going down.
The rate is going down.
Thank you for coming in.
We're not quite done, so I'm going to close the hearing. And could I have a motion, which...
There is a motion printed.
Yeah. Harold's always nice enough to give us the language out, because we need it. It is on page five, right in the middle.
I'll make a motion that we vote in accordance with MGL Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended, the percentage of local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property, relative to setting the fiscal year 2020 tax rates, and set the residential factor at 1.0, with a corresponding CIP shift of 1.0, pending approval of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Unanimous. Could I get a motion to sign the classification tax allocation?
I'll make a motion to sign the classification tax allocation for fiscal year 2020.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Have a safe drive.
May yours be assured.
Good luck on your drive tomorrow.
Be careful.
All right. We're moving on. We have our Class 1, 2, and 3 license renewal applications tonight. The people are starting to filter in. We are on time. It is 6 o'clock. Is Mr. Jerko here? Yes, he is. Hello, David. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just wait for that.
You're going to wait for that? All right, ready? One more set off. We have a board member missing. If you want a ticket with you tonight, we can send him in if you want his...
No, this is fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm safe.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Good night.
Book here?
Yeah.
Pass it down?
Which one do you want to start with?
Dave, wait. Do you hand him three?
No.
Do you want to look at it? Yeah.
Proof of their sales.
I support with the will that I have the building's practice.
Okay.
I actually have the letter here from... He said, "I'm all set. There's no problem." He just didn't get the stuff in. He'll have it in tomorrow. He got a little tied up.
You'll see the list from Laura. You have both in spreadsheet form and in handout form in your packets.
I'm sorry?
Just for them, just everything that people have turned in, what inspections have been done and stuff like that. That's what they have up here.
Yeah, he did it all. They did it, but just trying to turn it in. We're going to watch it, right?
Okay, so I'm looking at a pending fire inspection and pending building, which you've got the letter?
Yep.
And so fire is...
So building won't inspect until fire is done.
And fire hasn't finished yet?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Few sales this year, huh?
Yeah. There was some backlog. You have to go back to it.
Yeah, I just looked at the... Yeah. Oh, some stuff that you've been holding on to that just finally...
Yeah.
So what we'll do, unless a member of the board has a reason to not take action on a license tonight, you can make a motion to approve the license. In this case, it's for Class 3, pending the fire and building inspection certificates.
As well as...
No, so I just wanted to...
It's just for one...
This is just for custom.
All right.
Make that motion. Motion to approve the license for Class 3, custom fabrication and auto, pending the fire inspection and the building inspection certificate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Get his money.
Is Greg's here?
I'm sorry?
Yep.
You're done.
Thank you, Stacey.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Greg, we got... Yep. Good. Same thing. We have a pending building inspection certificate. Did Will make it out, too?
He was there last week.
Yeah, he just hasn't filled out the paperwork yet. So we're just waiting for that one to officially get to the office, and it should be fine. The inspection's already been done.
Okay. He said everything was good, so...
So I have a question, just because for custom, he had... He didn't have the fire inspection, because he was waiting for the building inspection. But for these next few, it doesn't say anything about fire. It just says...
Because the fire's been done at that point.
Fire's first.
Yeah. So fire has to be done before building goes out.
I got you. Sorry.
Brand-new. Congratulations.
We had it last week.
You had this book last year? Did you? You must have, if I'm looking at the dates right. 5/2/18. And unless anybody has questions, make a motion.
Motion to approve Class 3 license for Greg's restorations, pending receiving building inspection certificate.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. No, I want to come back. They can just... It's progress program, right?
Yeah, you have to come and get it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
It'll be at the office.
Thank you.
Ralph Clario?
Hi.
Hi. Come on down. Ralph, we're running a little early. Is that all right? We'll get you out of here. You're supposed to be at 6:10. And it's 6:04.
I'm working 21 hours now. I can't see anywhere.
Okay, that's not a good sign. Don't tell us that you're in camera right now. Have you been plowing since last night?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
I'm going to go back on down.
Coffee? Red Bull?
Nah, I can't eat much. You know? Coffee bothers me. There's getting old.
Is that...
I just...
That's different.
Yeah, I just...
This was the one we approved in June? Was it? You got your license to start?
I still haven't got my plates yet, so I can't get cards and that, so...
Yeah.
You know, I can't get them all.
And is that just a state process?
Yeah, that's awful. Oh, it took me two hours. I was on the phone, waiting for them to answer. You know? Two, three, four times I did it. I just can't get through them. And then we asked them to send the number for the Federals, you know, number?
Yep.
It's okay for any DVA, as many as you want. And they want me to have one come through that says Anthony's Auto. And they keep sending it through with my name on it. So this is like the third time I've done it again. And it's going to take another couple of weeks.
So you really haven't even started?
And then I could have the police come and look at it, I mean, statesly. That might take another two, three months. I don't know.
It takes forever. It took me forever.
Yeah. So I go, "What are you going to do?"
You must know somebody you can call.
Oh, anybody? They're all gone. All my friends are gone.
I'm kind of those people.
I was going to say.
All right, are we good? I think we're good. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve Class 3 license for Anthony's Auto, pending receipt of the building inspection certificate.
Second.
Oh, on the building certificate? I talked to the girls up here, and she... They decided that it'd be once a year. And Will had already done it a few months ago. So I don't know. They decided that it'd be once a year.
Did they?
Yeah. So next, maybe next December, they'll do it or something. I'm not sure. But that's what they said to me.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to get it in writing, and Will's just going to...
Yeah, just wait.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Another year of trying.
Yep. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Stay safe out there tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Lazarus, you're supposed to be at 6:15.
All right, how are you? What time is it?
And it is 6:07. Would you like to wait till 6:15?
No, I would not like to wait.
Come on down.
Where's Modern Classic?
68.
Oh, at the... I was just in line.
Yep.
They have the bare mailbox.
Yeah, I was going to say the cardboard.
The bare mailbox is almost done.
Is it? Well, it fell over, right? This summer?
Fell over. The feet are riding off it. The ants are eating it.
Time for a new one.
Sad day.
Did one of you make it?
No, somebody gave it to me, believe it or not.
It was like, so you're a master carpenter.
Pretty much a one-of-a-kind. I don't know if we'll find another one. I haven't seen the building inspector yet, either.
Okay. This seems like a theme tonight.
Correct.
Yeah, I touched base with him.
Yeah.
He was supposed to swing down. I saw him.
But fire came.
Yep.
Fantastic. There you go.
You had a good year?
It was okay.
Yeah.
You're a first Class 2 of the evening.
He's not getting a Class 2 license?
Three.
Three.
What's three?
Chuck.
Yeah.
No questions? Motion to approve Class 2 license for Modern Classic, pending receipt of the building inspection certificate.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll go up and pay him this week.
Funny.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good night.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Yeah, same to you.
Thank you.
The next two companies notified us that they won't be having anyone come tonight. Mal's Auto Sales is currently working out a real estate tax issue with the Treasure Collector's Office. And so has yet to turn in any items for us. So we'd ask that that be held until a later meeting date, until those issues can be resolved.
Great.
And then Mann's Incorporated provided us his books to my office, so those are here, he is pending fire and building certificate, and there's a note that the licensee Fred Wozniak has retired and that his son Jeff is now managing the business.
Great.
There should have been a transfer of license then, did, did they not do that?
Laura's checking into the paperwork behind that.
So...
I was gonna say, I thought we had this conversation last year, I remember this conversation about Fred was retiring and Jeff was taking over, and how that was gonna...
It hadn't happened yet.
I was gonna say, but we had, I remember the conversation about how it was gonna all...
Nothing's changing in terms of the business.
Correct, yeah, it's just...
Just the ownership.
Right, but it's, I think there's a transfer document.
She, Laura's looking into it.
Because otherwise, he'd be applying for a new license, which is, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
It's gonna be a transfer.
We can make it approved pending...
Pending the transfer.
Pending receiving of any documents necessary, and if it's not, it's just gonna have to be a new process anyhow, so the approval will be...
Come back. Is that your motion?
Yes, I will make that motion upon allowing you all to review the books.
Did you get that? What's the motion?
Motion is to approve the Class Two license for Mann's Inc. pending any and all additional requirements that have to be received by the town, including a potential transfer document.
Excellent. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, and we are holding on Mal's. With no action tonight.
Do we need to vote no action on that, or just hold it?
We do not, because they're not here.
Correct.
Alright, um...
VSO.
Do you wanna...
Do you wanna take his books?
No, but she said she wasn't sure if she was gonna be able to make it because of the weather, so it's up to you if you wanna...
The roads are bad, and she's coming from Westminster, so...
Well, so we have one person in the room.
Oh.
And just FYI, as you look at your agenda on the back page, something got added a couple of hours ago, and it really was a few hours ago, it was a school committee appointment, and what was originally meant to be discussed tonight was that we needed to re-advertise since we've had a vacancy since May.
Did we formally advertise prior and after the vacancy?
Oh, it's been advertised consistently since the vacancy.
Okay, so we have, posting everything like that?
Yeah. And last night, a school committee, a current school committee member reached out, said that someone had approached her with some interest, asked what the process would be. I said, well, a letter to the board of interest. And I said, here's the problem, we're meeting today, clearly not on the agenda to do an appointment. The next, school committee meeting is next, Monday, they're doing superintendent review at this point, superintendent renegotiation of, of contract, in addition, you know, obviously many other things, and the question tonight is, you know, knowing how long this has been a vacancy for us, a vacancy for the town of Rutland, do we act on it tonight as a matter of, it was not reasonably anticipated until we got the letter, and has some time sensitivity, or do you argue, well, it's been since May, it's not that sensitive, it can wait two weeks to be formally on the agenda? We are missing one member tonight. Certainly the gentleman who came tonight, I think, where's the letter? It's here, right?
It's in the back, yeah.
In the back.
So it's in your later flaps.
Sorry.
It's what?
It's in your later flaps, behind the memo from Anita.
And it's not a contested position?
Oh, it is, yeah. No, it, well, no, we've had a very hard time filling it.
Oh, why not?
And the, the term expires in May.
Thank you, that was a question. So, this is Jeff Haynes, welcome. You can see what we have in front of us, that sort of weird position that we're in.
Sure, absolutely.
I think your worst-case scenario would be, obviously, school committee meetings are open to the public, for you to sit there as an observer of one meeting on Monday.
Yes.
Knowing that we would be reconsidering this at our next meeting, or the board can have the discussion tonight, so we have his letter.
Excuse me, May twenty twenty-one, not this coming May.
Oh. May twenty twenty-one.
Alright.
So you would not have to run for reelection in May of twenty twenty.
Okay.
You'd be filling a vacancy that is essentially a year and a half.
Okay.
Okay.
That's included in the memo from Anita.
I was gonna say, we have the memo from Anita.
Yes, we do, thank you.
Stating that there was resignation May twenty nineteen, and it's our duty as the board, per chapter forty-one, section eleven, to fill the position until the next annual town election.
Right.
Nothing's opening in May of twenty twenty, so it's one-year term expiring in twenty twenty-one.
And I, I think, I don't know if you were standing near me, but the chair, the school committee, had approached us after the roundtable, just to remind us that we still had a vacancy to fill.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, as well as a vacancy on their financial policies.
The other committee.
Committee.
Yeah, my only... You sound excellent, based on the conversation we had, and I applaud anyone that wants to get involved. I, I just, I don't like when we have agenda items, the agenda doesn't, it's not for us really, it's for the public to be able to anticipate, plan, and weigh in, it's also for us to be able to anticipate, plan, and weigh in. We have an item that's added two hours prior to a meeting, it just makes it tough to review materials. You know, most of us are working, don't have the time to review two hours prior to a meeting, so we take the time out of the weekends to do it. The public, any member of the public who would have looked at the agenda would not have known this was on it. So that's why I would rather just, for sake of process, you know, wait and then appoint you at the next meeting, just to be able to kinda let everybody know and make sure everyone's comfortable. It's a procedural thing with me, but that's it.
It, I think it really comes down to how people feel about whether this is a time-sensitive situation, that, that's really what we're coming down to. Obviously, if we had an emergency coming up that everyone deemed an emergency and it was sort of black and white, you wouldn't question it, you'd be able to deal with it under the opportunities of open meeting. This one, it's, it's a gray area, so...
But next Monday, you're saying there's an important vote or an important meeting at the school committee, that...
They're all important, but there's no vote, I mean, I think it's something...
Well, see, we can see what their agenda is.
Could he be like a tentative member, attend the next meeting, and then we vote formally on his appointments at the next meeting?
If we were to, if we were to push back the appointment, would you be willing to attend just as a member of the public in good faith at the next meeting, just to...
Well, sure.
Yeah, to get your feet...
I mean, I'd be, I would be there regardless, the seat will change.
As a member-elect.
I mean, if the, I guess the thing, the quandary there is, attended as a member of the public versus as a school board member are different, right?
Sure.
So, that's the...
So they had an ad hoc subcommittee meeting canceled today because of school being out. December ninth, there's an education subcommittee, school committee, I don't think that that has been posted yet, full agenda, but actually Superintendent Goals and Evaluations Subcommittee meeting is, is actually posted for February, so...
Okay, so it's not like it's a superintendent's re-up, you know, something that's...
Yeah.
Alright, so there's nothing critical to be voted on, he can go in like a...
As a member of the...
Member-elect type, type capacity for the next week's meeting, and then the week after that will vote formally, which I don't anticipate any issues.
I would ask this, does the board want to have Jeff come back in two weeks to us? Or would we like the opportunity to have him introduce himself to us tonight? You made it here in the snow, we can ask him a couple of questions, and he won't come back in two weeks.
He's already here.
He's already here.
If you wanna, we always love when people come.
Well, yeah.
But now that you're here, if you wanna subject yourself to being groped by all of us.
Yeah.
Should I move over here?
No, you've got a mic right there.
There's a mic right there.
Let's be casual, since you're the only person here.
Snowstorm out there.
Over here.
No, no, you're fine.
There's a mic up in the ceiling.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah, welcome, tell us about yourself.
Thank you, well, we moved to Rutland in two thousand fourteen, and we were discussing earlier, that one of the largest factors in that decision was, was the schools. I'm sure all of you are aware that when you look at school rankings across the state, there's a concentration of them that are in the higher echelon, which are around Boston, and then as you get out, or that area, as you get away from Boston, you don't find so many schools with a lot of good ratings, but Wachusett was an exception to that, and that was one of the reasons we wanted to come out here. And I felt like, as, as my daughter got into middle school this year, I wanted to get involved with that particular school, so I'm on the SimCo committee, and that's where I learned about, that there was a vacancy on, on the district-wide committee as well, and so that, that sparked my interest.
Can you tell me what SimCo stands for and is about?
You know what, I'm gonna tell you the truth. I know the S and the I are school improvement, and I think the CEO is committee, but the upshot is, is that it's, you, we look at different ideas and strategies that can be used to improve the middle school, and what we've been doing in the first couple of meetings is brainstorming, just some very broad topics, we're kinda starting up at a high level, and then we're, you know, we're just kinda drilling down to more specifics and try and get feedback along the way from all the groups affected, be it the students, the teachers, the parents, and trying to, you know, trying to get a really broad three sixty type of view, and then, you know, we're, we're working through that, and that's, that's what SimCo does.
Can I ask, I work in education.
Alright.
What are the areas, I mean, really, you're passionate about? It sounds like you're very involved, you got involved on your own, must be something that really sparks that, I mean, what, what do you see as, as needs for improvement moving forward, and what are the areas that, that you wanna focus on in terms of your, your own goals?
Well, I, I would say it, it more came from the fact that, again, recognizing that we were, we were drawn to the, the quality of education here, so I, I think it was, it was just an understanding of the critical importance of that. I, I don't think, I don't think it can possibly be overstated. I, I feel like, you know, that's maybe one of the very best things that we can be doing, and so, that was really kind of the impetus, as far as like, you know, I have a specific thing. I mean, if I were, if I were to, you know, if I were to cast, you know, one big broad idea at the district, I would say that they should certainly implement Mandarin as a foreign language. That's, I, I have my reasons for that, but, you know, if you were asking for something specific, so I would say, I would say that's something that the schools should absolutely look at, but it's really just, just an appreciation. We're already starting in a good spot. You know, Rutland and the towns in this district are already in an enviable spot in what is statistically an enviable state. When you, you know, the United States as a whole, competing nationally, doesn't do so great K through twelve.
Yeah.
But Massachusetts, competing internationally, does extraordinarily well. So we're already in a good spot, and this district even more so, so, I, I mean, that was really kind of the driver.
Great.
I, I don't know if that answers your question.
No, it does, I mean, there's, there's obviously a lot of challenges, you know, as we look forward for regional districts in particular, always questions of how to allocate funding, things like that. But I certainly, yeah, I couldn't agree with you more.
Excellent.
Can I ask you a Rutland-specific question?
Yeah.
I don't know how much you got involved right when you first moved in, there's always a ramping up period, but one of the, the sort of unenviable positions that Rutland has been in the past several years, not so much in the past few, has unfortunately, having been to push back against a requested school budget because they simply didn't have it within their budget to do so, that got structured around requests to the residents for things like debt exclusions and overrides that would then fail, for various reasons, you know, you just actually sat here tonight as we set the tax rate for the upcoming year, and it's, it's always such a, a hard balance to strike with people who might be on fixed incomes, or people who, who simply can't bear the burden of additional taxes. In most cases, this was done knowing that it wasn't because education didn't need more funding, it was just that there was only so much to go around, and we had other essential services that we had to try to figure that out, and I'm wondering how you're going to work through that process with the town that you're coming from, as you're sitting around the table, whose primary goal, of course, is to fund education.
Yeah, no, I, I get, I get your question, I mean, I, I, I was well aware very early on of the struggles and, you know, and, and making sure people came out to vote, I'm very familiar with that. I mean, my take is, what I said a moment ago, is that education is important, and I, I'm sure like, like many of you, I've been, I have been frustrated when I hear people at the state or, or federal level, and, you know, they say, you know, they'll, they'll go in and they'll talk to the school, and they'll make sure the cameraman's there, and they'll say, you know, kids, stay in school, it's really important, this is the best thing, you gotta keep doing that, and then that same guy or that same lady will go back to Beacon Hill, or they'll go back to DC, and the first thing they slash is education. Kids aren't stupid, they, kids aren't dumb, they can, they can figure that out, you know, they, they understand, they're, they're smart enough to equate what an action versus words are. So, to, to get it to the local level, I mean, obviously, as you did tonight, you have to, you have to put your arms around what the budget is, you have to understand, you have to understand what, you know, what are the numbers, and you had some great questions about not just this year, but in the future as well.
I think you'll find too, that when you reference the greater Boston, that this district, despite the ranking, does a lot more with less, because there is less in some of those more affluent and greater Boston communities, so in that way, we've been able to kind of, you know, boost the bang for your buck out here, but I mean, there's also the challenges too, that didn't exist twenty, thirty years ago. I mean, you have, if you look at health studies in the region, you have, for example, I think the superintendent brought this up at the, the budget, the roundtable we had, is that you're seeing the need for more emotional and support guidance counselors in the schools, and there's a huge need for that, and there's a myriad reasons why that exists in this region. That is, that said, I mean, you have to make tough choices because you need those staff, that may mean less if something else, and so, I mean, those are the con, the tough conversations that I think, too, Sheila's also alluding to, is that some of that stuff needs to be hashed out.
I think, I think, I think that, you know, the, the easiest way, and I'm not saying that there is an easy way, but the clearest way is, is for the, for the towns to say, hey, look, this, this is what we have to work with. I mean, I, we understand that you might like this, we understand that, you know, all these things might be great, but this is what we have to work with, and I, and I, I mean, I, I, when, when, if the towns and the, and the committee are, are working together with, you know, a clear understanding of, you know, what the resources are, instead of just, you know, shooting for what we all might like, I, I think, I think that's a clear path to establishing something that can work. I, I wouldn't be so bold as to say easy, but clear.
Thank you so much.
Jeff, can I ask what you do for work?
I work, I work from home, I do a lot of editing, I, basically, it can be copywriting, proofing, video editing, photo editing, all kinds of stuff, where I'm fortunate enough to do it at my house.
No pressure, but the PTO is gonna be calling.
I know. I, I did, yeah, whenever I, whenever I throw that out there, I, I find new friends.
Whether you're looking or not, right? And I know, I think you touched on this, you have at least one child in the school system, is that, so you're a little bit familiar at least with the Rutland side of schools, is that, okay?
I, yes, she has been, she's worked her way through all, well, through two, and now starting the third.
I think she's probably my middle daughter's class, my...
Sixth grade.
What's, what's her name?
My middle daughter is Zaylee.
Haley?
Zaylee.
Zaylee, I'll ask her, does she know Jade?
Probably, I'm sure, I'll ask her. Yeah, very good.
We really appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
And the time to talk to us in the midst of a snowstorm.
Absolutely, uh, thank you, thanks for actually just even getting me in, you know, to do this on, on short notice, I appreciate that very much, so...
And I think, I mean, if I can speak for the board, I don't know for sure if, I don't think we would need you back in two weeks, unless we had questions, in which case we would ask, I would assume Mike to reach out, if...
Okay.
And I can just give you a call the next day to let you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so otherwise I'll just, otherwise I'm just going to go to the other meeting, the school meeting next week.
With our blessing.
And then, right.
And anticipate us to vote in two weeks.
Or not our blessing. You can go either way.
Either way, you'll feel the same.
Yeah, and if I, yeah, if you need me back, just give me a shout.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
It's so nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on. TA update.
Sure. So, there's a fun weekend coming up here in town. So just as a reminder, we have our 19th Annual Festival of Trees this coming weekend. Friday evening at 7:30 is the Bell Concert at the Congregational Church, followed by the Brownie Sunday Social. Saturday at 6:00 PM is the singing and reading of the names, followed by the tree lighting at the Town Common at 6:30. 4:00 to 8:00 PM, visit with Santa, food trucks on the common, stroll through the festival and the outdoor labyrinth. Sunday, 1:00 to 4:00 PM, visit with Santa and reindeer train rides. And at 3:45, we'll have the basket name drawing. So sure to be fun for anyone who can attend. Couple of updates from Beacon Hill. Both the Student Opportunity Act and the Hands-Free Driving Laws were signed into law by the governor. We'll see what financial benefits the town will have based on the new Student Opportunity Act. And a big thank you to Rep. Ferguson, who served on the conference committee for that one and did a lot of work for that. We are currently looking at seeing how the Hands-Free Driving Act will affect our operations in town, particularly with our snow operations. Ironic that today is the day that we bring that up. But we're working with Chief Monaco and Director Moriarty to figure out a way that works, that's cost-effective and works.
Didn't always have cell phones and the world didn't stop spinning.
Yeah.
There's plow, go up the impound.
Still Four Corners and Mason Farm have partnered for the next couple of weekends. I think at least this coming weekend, the weekend after, and possibly the weekend after that, they'll be doing their joint Christmas tree sale slash holiday flea market with maple products at Four Corners from Mason Farm. So it should be good. A very big crowd this past weekend, Saturday and Sunday. So hopefully it continues to go forward like that.
Has anybody been sort of up to Canada or up to the very northern edge of Vermont? And there's something called a maple creamy, which is soft-serve, maple-flavored soft-serve. They have it. I'm going to give a product shout-out here. Oh my gosh, it was so good. My kids, everybody was very happy.
Also from Boston, we got notice from the Attorney General's Office today that they have approved our earthworks bylaw that was recently passed at the town meeting.
Great.
Yeah, it's a lot quicker in the fall than in May when everyone else is also doing bylaw work. And last two things I have. First one here, we have hired our recording secretary. So we'll start having a live secretary here at meetings at night after a round of interviews that included myself, Dave George, the town planner, Norm Anderson, Chair of the Planning Board, and Ian, who's the Chair of the Finance Committee, Tamika Murphy, will be serving as the recording secretary for all of our boards. This won't put her over the full-time hour range because she is also the recording secretary for the Conservation Commission and the ZBA. But she's excited. She gave a great interview and she does a good job.
She'll be doing this every night of the week?
Yep.
Except for I.
Yep.
Wow.
And then the last thing, I just want to say thank you to the public. We had a, knock on wood, astonishingly low number of calls at our emergency departments today during a snowstorm. We had one accident last night where a car drifted off the road, but no damage to the vehicle, no harm to the person. And then snow, a carbon monoxide call for snow that filled event. But those are the only calls we've gotten in relation to the storm. People have been staying off the roads. We haven't had any issues with cars parked on the roads from the parking ban. So just thank you to all the members of the public for cooperating with us on that.
Equipment's all holding up?
Yeah.
Joe's not reporting any major issues?
So far, so good.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good. We amazingly have no one here for public comment. Not a soul. We're going to move right on.
Somebody should do a wellness check on Dick.
Well.
If there's a night to take off, it's tonight.
Yeah. So we're going straight into old business and back to Mike for number one update.
Due to the weather prediction and some of the department heads, particularly the health agent requesting more time to fully take in all the input that was given at the public information session of the last week, as well as talking to colleagues on different department head listservs, we'll have the full document to present to the board at the 1216 meeting. But it is fully in the works. The criteria is being developed. It's just with those two department heads looking for extra time and then knowing that we probably have a light crowd tonight because of the weather. I figured we'd push that off to the next one.
Great.
Alright. Under old business, oh seven eight, TA review, goals and objectives. I have not received objectives choice from anyone.
I, no, mine's.
We're going to set a new deadline?
No, mine's not electronics, so I'll send it to you.
Okay. I need your choice of objectives.
Can you send us, can?
I can send you anything you want.
My dog ate my homework.
I will send, I'll send you anything you want. I'm going to send you the goals and objectives list, which is in your, you know, it's emailed out, but let's update the email and anything else. What else can you use?
We, what I was thinking would be helpful, as I was trying to pull stuff from emails all over the place, was Mike had sent his kind of, his own goals and objectives that he keeps track for himself.
Yep.
Our goals and objectives, the board goals and objectives, and then the document that we have from
The review doc?
The review doc.
Okay.
Of what has been done in the past. I think for me personally, those three were the ones that I've been going back and forth to the most, but to have them all, I don't know if anybody else has any.
So can I ask for a brand-new deadline of Friday the 13th? Date you can't forget. Yep. And that way we'll get them collated for Monday the 16th.
Yeah.
What I'll try to do, if that's your deadline, I'll try to get them out to everyone that weekend so that you'll have it and not just on the 16th, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry.
No, it's alright. I get it. Real jobs. New business. We have appointments, ex officio.
So I kind of initiated this one for Mr. William Banks, Jr.
Yes.
Bill Banks, Jr., he lives in Holden. He's a great guy. He, active member of the Sportsman's Club, but an even more active member of the Rutland Historical Society. He's been active in the town since the 1970s. His best friend is John Ledger, the old chief of police. So he always considers Rutland his primary home. But he's a regular staple at the Rutland Historical Society. And he really wants to be involved in the 300th Anniversary Committee and also the Historical Commission, if he is allowed. He understands that he may be ex officio, not being a Rutland resident, but he would like to volunteer to take place in the 300th Committee. He was active in the 275th Anniversary Celebration in there. I think he would be a very valuable asset. And the Historical Commission, I think if we allowed him on there, he would make the third number, which would set a quorum. So this would be something we should discuss. If there is something that's able to be discussed, whether he's a seat that could vote on the Historical Society Commission or...
So the bylaw that was passed by the town two years ago says that any member of commission needs to reside in the town for the purposes of voting?
Okay.
So that's.
So it's a non-voting member for both. Okay. So he, I had asked him to send an email, which I flipped. So he is asking for consideration for both committees, 300th and Historical Commission. So he's primary caregiver for Bill III. So him coming in and out of here would be kind of a, kind of a chore unless he needed to. So if you wanted to come forward, you could call him forward.
Say what?
I just think it's amazing how many people that have moved out of town but still consider Rutland their home. I mean, and really want to stay.
He didn't move. He didn't move. He's always been in Holden, but he's been associated with Rutland because of the club and friends, so.
Yeah. True love of Rutland.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, this wouldn't be our first one. We're now essentially saying on this, certainly on the 300th, that they can't, you know, be voting members. But my God, the more the merrier. Certainly 4th of July would never turn anybody away.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I mean, in my mind, I think I would be fine personally with both. I think the 300th is kind of totally fine. I don't know if there wants to be any conversation about the Historical Commission, given that that's.
Ex officios.
Well, he wouldn't be able to vote on that. So he would be a third seat, but they still lack a quorum.
Yeah.
Still need another resident.
Right.
But it's growing interest.
Yeah, and I think Lynn Turcot was actively working and trying to get a couple of more members.
Yeah.
I mean, he certainly can attend any Historical Commission we think he likes.
I guess, I know the Historical Commission, I know Jeff, you've been very involved in getting that group up and going again. What exactly is, are we looking at, what's the charge for the Historical Commission other than kind of, is there a charge other than just being the stewards of the town's history and kind of that kind of thing? I mean, nothing really has to go before them for approval. We don't have any historically significant properties. It's determined by the state, so.
I don't know, but I would assume or presume that it's preservation of the history of the town.
Yeah, in some cases it's a goal. But there had been conversations many years ago about whether or not the town should have a historic town center. That very quickly went to nowhere, but certainly that would be something that was under the purview of the Historical Commission. A project putting dates on some of the older houses in town, the plaques, something like that. Working with the Historical Society, kind of as a partner on some of these projects too.
Mm-hmm. And there has been some discussion at the Historical Society whether they should also step up to be part of the commission, but it just, everybody's got their own time challenges. Unfortunately, the cornerstones of the Historical Commission was Helen Viner and Jenna Parekian, who passed the same year. And then it just, everything became vacant after that, but they were kind of.
They really were the stewards of the.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I guess my question is, I'm not overly familiar. That's my fault. But the, there is no real, like, review authority with the Historical Commission in town in terms of?
No, because there's nothing other than the Rufus Putnam House that's National Historic Register. And there's nothing that the town currently oversees that has a historic significance attached to it from an, on a state level, to your point. Could they go forward in going after that as one of their goals? They could as a commission.
We have received a request for that for the Wood House. But until we have a commission, town really can't act on that.
But this would be an ex officio member anyway, so.
Yeah, so it would be a non-voting.
Yeah.
Alright, I was just curious. So hypothetically, if somebody wanted to paint the Rufus Putnam House, would there be a process for them to go through?
Yes.
Would it be through the town or through the state?
Both. Because it's nationally registered.
But who would be reviewing and approving through the town?
Historical Commission.
It would be the Historical Commission. So how many members do we have now?
Two.
That's a problem. Alright.
Would it be the town's Historical Commission where the location is of the building? I don't know. On National Historic Register, I think there might be even more hurdles. I'm honestly not sure.
Yeah. I think if it, the town is involved, but it's a very small part.
Yeah.
And then the federal side of things takes over most of it.
I was just curious. Having worked with historic districts in Worcester, I just didn't know what the level of involvement was.
Yeah.
Alright, no, I think.
I mean, I think it's great and I'm all for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So would you like to make your motion?
I would. I'd like to make a motion that William Banks, Jr. is appointed to the 300th Anniversary Committee as an ex officio member.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Make an additional motion that William Banks, Jr. of Holden be appointed to the Historical Commission as an ex officio appointment.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent. Glad to have you.
Yeah, he's a great guy.
Thank you. Thank you for wanting to do it.
Alright, we have select contracts.
Yes, we have the final documents that need to be signed for the solar panels to go live. The ones you have before you today are for the solar panels at Glenwood. We will have NaQuag at the next meeting. The reason why we don't have that one before us today is because Dr. McCall still had to sign those and the office was closed today due to the snow day. So.
About time. That was a concern by custodian staff there.
Yeah, yeah. So this is to turn them live.
What's taken so long on the power?
Yeah, this is to have them go live.
That's great.
He brought them to my office to sign and then the document references the select board. So I was like, no, those have to go before the board meeting on Monday, so.
Did you look at it over, Mike?
Yeah.
Any issues?
Nope. I've looked it over. KP's looked it over. Diane's looked it over. Because even though Diane from RRG isn't our assessor, she's running all solar projects for RRG communities. So she's looked it over. She's fine with it.
Let's sign it.
Alright, so there are three originals and... Mike, it looks like it's just one signature.
Yep, yep. Signature by the chair would be the motion.
Did I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that the board authorize the chair to sign the host consent agreement between Wachusett and Glenwood for the power purchase agreement.
There's three different contracts in that package.
And?
The notice of the lease.
The... Notice of the lease.
And the First Amendment to the Power Purchase Agreement.
And the First Amendment to the Power Purchase Agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's a huge step. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank God that's done, or at least passed on. And we're moving on. So we already did our school committee appointment discussion. We'll bring it back, right, from the 16th?
We make sure that's on the agendas.
Yeah, definitely.
And now we're moving on to correspondence, which went along with it. We'll do that with other business.
Oh, okay.
He's memo was, actually you already referenced it, correct?
Yeah, yeah. So that's all said.
We're going to do the veteran service, Agent?
Yes, we are.
Sarah did say she was going to try to come tonight, but she was unsure because of the weather. But I do have her biography here that I'm happy to share. Sarah actually reached out to the town when she heard that we were having some VSO issues. She is currently the VSO in Ashburnham, Westminster, Princeton, and Hubbardston. She knows the job. She's been doing well in those towns. I checked with all the town administrators. I think she'd be great. She, I'll read her thing. Sarah Wyman is an Air Force veteran. She served over nine years as a security forces member in Cheyenne Mountain Air Force Station in Colorado Springs and home in Air Force Base in New Mexico. She deployed in the Middle East three times in support of operations Iraqi Freedom, Enduring Freedom, Noble Eagle, and New Dawn. She currently lives in Westminster with her husband, who is an active-duty Air Force, with their two children.
Impressive. So I know she's not here, but thank you for your service, for watching.
We need to introduce her to Karen Greenwood.
Yeah, yeah. And she already has the training. She's already doing the job. And Tim Gagnon, who is Spencer's VSO and our former VSO, the state never took away his credentials for Rutland. So he has agreed to sit down and work with her on catching up to all the Rutland-related issues.
That's great. That was a good way to end.
Thank you.
So happy that she's on board.
So we just need a vote to approve the appointment.
Motion to approve Sarah Wyman to be appointed to the position of Veterans Agent for the Town of Rutland.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anytime she would like to come in.
Yeah, she wants to. It just was the weather today, yeah.
Understood.
Fit around her schedule.
Yeah.
Just get her in. Are there any other matters to come before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Adjourn.
Aye.